My name is Jenny Gramio.
Hello.
Hello. So please state your full name and the office you're running for.
Yes, my name is Salvador Melendez and I'm running for Montebello City Council.
Do you live in Montebello? If so, how long have you been a resident?
Yeah, so I've lived here twenty-five out of my twenty-eight years. During my college years, I lived a few years in Pasadena. And, but I was always domiciled here in Montebello. And yeah, it's a city I love and that I continue to live in.
What is your current occupation?
So right now, I'm a second-year law student. I was working a month ago at an immigration law firm. But I had to step down in order to focus on law school and to focus on the campaign.
Do you feel your occupation and personal life will allow sufficient time to dedicate to the office of the city council?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, I'm gonna treat this, the city council position as a full-time job. And I think that's the attention that's needed right now. I am a part-time law student, but definitely, you know, I, I will treat this as a full-time job and I just want the city, I just wanna give everything I have to pick up the city. And, you know, and that, that just requires a lot of time, a lot of energy, but, but I'm ready for that.
Have you been involved in any community work such as clubs, organizations, events, or volunteer service?
Oh man, a lot. Okay, so I, I, first, I, when I was thirteen, I started volunteering for Miraculous Metal, which is a local church here. I started volunteering, giving food at the pantry. And then I would do that Tuesdays to Thursdays. And after that, they gave me a job. It was actually my first part-time job. My daddy used to work at the church. And yeah, so I used to change light bulbs, you know, which I almost got electrocuted once, by the way. And I, you know, I'd take out the trash, but yeah, it was half volunteer and half going, you know, working. And I did that up all the way up to, I think my second year, so I started at Rio Hondo College, then I went to Calcielli. Up to my second year of Rio Hondo, so it was like seven or eight years volunteering at the church. And then I also joined while I was in college and Pasadena, I was still involved in the community and I joined, I joined an organization called Milk, which is Montebello Youth Leadership Club. So I still wanted to give back to the community. So I did that for almost a year. And then when I was in Pasadena, I also had a nonprofit called What About Us. It was unfortunately, it only lasted for a few months, but it was pretty much give back to the, to the homeless population and work with the LA Family Housing. Other than that, I have, you know, I do have my local chapter here in Montebello called the East Cities Young Democrats, where we try to get young people involved in local politics. We were able to successfully bring Kevin De Leon here at the Daily Brew. And one of our biggest missions with the club was to get young people involved in politics and also increase the voter, the voter participation in our city. It's one of the lowest in the area. And with that, you know, we wanted to bring in, bridge the gap between, you know, college students with their elected officials. So we have been able to provide those resources to bring judicial candidates. And some of the judicial candidates, shout out to Veronica Salceda, who's running for judge right now. I don't know the judge, see, but she's actually mentoring one of our, one of our members. So it's stuff like that, like, you know, they're giving back to the community, they're, they're presenting, they just wanna help the community. Veronica is like a perfect example for that. So yeah, so that's my involvement with that and yeah, I've done all the other, you know, volunteer work. I've also done some of the cleanup works here in the area. And yeah.
Do you generally spend time patroning businesses or visiting public spaces in Montebello? If so, which businesses or locations do you enjoy?
Oh man, yes, okay. I was, I thought, I thought there was gonna be a time where Terry from the Daily Brew was gonna kick me out. I was literally there all day, every day, just, you know, studying and just, I would go there and just talk to him or talk to some of the people there, like Wilson and I was there all the time. Unfortunately, it closed down. So now, my new coffee place is ground up. Not advertising, but you know, they're really chill people, really cool people. And I go there often. I also go to Alondras. I've been to The Angry Horse, you know, and yeah, you know, I try to go to different brioche too. They have really nice cupcakes and pastries and they have good stuff there. But yeah, and I try to spend as much time as I can here in Montebello. And that's part of the reason too, I wanna bring more stuff that we can do here, farmer's market, but you know, stuff to energize the city, different subject, different day.
So what motivates you to want to dedicate your time and energy to serve, guide, and protect the residents of Montebello?
That's a good question. You see, that, that's, it's just my will and it's kind of similar to why I chose the path of going into law school and hopefully one day become an attorney, is that I just wanna serve. Like, I wanna provide an opportunity for the community to get up. It gets me angry that every city around us has picked up except us. And it's not even that we stayed the same, but we've actually gone lower. You know, it's unfortunate that, that, you know, that all the trouble that we get into and we're not able to, to develop, we're not able to provide the services that the community needs. Most of the people in Montebello, it's like, you know, I relate back to my parents, like they're, my daddy used to have like three jobs. He doesn't care what was happening in the city council. He didn't care about city hall. What he wanted to do was just provide to his family. And because of that, you know, I'm not afraid to say it, but because of that and because there's not that much involvement at city hall and city council, they're able to get away with the, the stuff they're getting away with. And we're not afraid to say it, you know, and that, that just got me mad. That gets me angry. I'm really passionate about giving back to the community and lifting up my community. So that's why I decided to, you know, to step up and run.
That's what drives you?
Mm-hmm.
What are the main goals you would like to accomplish as city council member?
Yeah, we definitely need to, we need to pick up the city, right? We need to provide an opportunity for, for people to, to have the same locations and the same opportunities as other cities. One of the biggest goals that we wanna do is we wanna district the city up. So what that means is that we would provide five different districts to, to cover all of Montebello. And what that would do is hold, one, take money out of politics, because that's a big issue in this city. Two would be that you would have one true representative for each city. So then, instead of you, if you have an issue in your district, instead of just, you know, telling somebody, you know, all the city council members, you would go to that representative and say, "Look, this is the issue, this is what we're dealing with." And you have that true representation there. So then that city council member can advocate and fight for you in that area. And you know what? That city council member that lives in that area would know the issues to take care of. Because everybody's scattered around and if all the city council members live in the north, they don't know what's going on in the south. They don't know what life is in the south. So that would go into each area needs to be covered by different city council member. Another thing too that we wanna do is bring in the idea and the concept of businesses that make sense. So for example, right now, we have a, an area in Whittier in Montebello that, you know, we have Alondras, we have The Angry Horse, and then we're gonna have the Boulevard Market. So that area's about to, you know, it has a lot of potential. We have two empty lots there. If we bring in some restaurants there that can complement one another, now we can make an afternoon out of it. Now we can, we can go in there instead of us leaving the city to go to a nice restaurant somewhere else. We can make an afternoon. And you know what? We can spend our money here. We can bring other people to, to spend their money here. So we have to be really smart about it. That place Jimmy's next to Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo, yeah. I mean, it's been, you know, it's been closed for such a long time.
Oh, this is weird.
Yeah, if we have to eat up the cost a little bit to put something in there, that's what we're gonna have to do, better than being empty. So, you know, and another thing too is that we've knocked on almost six thousand homes, probably more. And people want a place here that, that they can go to. People wanna spend their money here. People wanna, they want the spirit of Montebello to come back up, you know? We will be able to support that area, but, but unfortunately, we don't, because we only have sporadic locations of, of things to do, you know, and people, people wanna, they wanna pick up Montebello. And it starts like that with the businesses that make sense, because then you complement each business. We just can't have, you know, two restaurants and then throwing a ninety-nine cent store in there. How is that gonna complement each other? So, yeah.
What are, what skills, attributes, or resources do you possess that will allow you to accomplish your goals?
Yeah, so, and it's, and the reason why I laugh at this question is because I am the youngest candidate. So with that, you know, I've heard it all along, what's your experience, what's going on, this and that. Look, we need, what we don't have in city halls, we don't have innovation and we don't have a vision. Unfortunately, it's, it's, there's so much things that we can bring, you know? I'll give you an example. Right now, Whittier has an app called Whittier Twenty-Four Seven. It's an app that you download and let's say there's some tagging over there. You could take a picture, that picture gets attributed to the appropriate department and then you get a troubleshoot ticket, you know? It just says, "Ticket this" or "Ticket whatever." When that gets addressed, then it gets back to that person that put that thing and says, "Your issue has been resolved." Either they painted the graffiti or they did whatever they had to do. What that starts doing is that there's no way that we can go right now and start and pull out a report of where all these things are happening or what are these, the main issues. So there's no accountability. So if we start developing that system, then we could pull a report and say, "Okay, on Maple and Beverly, there's been twenty tagging incidents." So now we could have a police patrol or, or something, or, or now we could have more focus on that. And that's just an application. So it's, it's a new, as a millennial running, you know, we need to bring technology into this. So that's one of the things that I would bring. And also, we need, look, I've told this to everyone and I, I'm sure all the candidates agree on this. I don't have a magic wand that just says, "Boop, budget's fixed." You know, local politics takes a long time. It's a very slow process. But we can start changing the image of things. We can start doing the little things. And if we start tackling those stuff little by little, then you know what? We can, we can get our city back on track. And the issue with Montebello is that we try to put a Band-Aid on everything instead of seeing, "What's a ten-year, uh, what do we wanna see in Montebello in ten years?" All we do is when the issue gets really bad, boom, let's put a Band-Aid. Cause it's, it's as bad, you know, if we don't do anything, it's gonna explode or whatever. So we need to have a plan of how Montebello is gonna look in the next ten years. And also for like a business plan too, you know, how is it gonna look in ten years? So those are things that we need, we need a different mindset of, of, of thinking, you know? We, we have to stop being the ones that follow and we gotta be the leaders. And there's, there's a lot of things that we can do that, you know, to make us a leader amongst our neighbors.
What do you feel is a reasonable timeline for you to accomplish your goals?
Oh man, so that goes back to that, right?
I know, you said the one thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, but it's being sincere and that's what a lot of people pick up from us, you know? It's, we just try to keep it real and local politics is really slow. So what we gotta do is the little things, little by little. We got, we gotta start, you know, we gotta start slow. We gotta, we gotta figure out everything we can. We gotta, you know, something like even having town halls, you know? We don't have town halls there. We don't have council member, you know, coffee with the council member. So people don't even know what's going on. So the first thing is to start bringing transparency. So start, start meeting with people and saying, "Okay, these are the issues. This is what's going on." And then little by little, as a community, start building up, you know? At the end of the day, if we all work together, you know, we all pick up the city. We all beautify the city. Everyone wins. Property owners go up, businesses go up. So it, it's something that all of us as a community needs to start working on and it, it takes a process, you know, and it's little by little, but we need to start setting up a plan for the next ten, ten years, ten, fifteen years.
Montebello has suffered through several years of financial hardship. What specific steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Alright, so this is what, this is what I tell everyone. Alright. So I don't know everything, right? And like I've mentioned, transparency is a big, big, big thing that we need to start doing. We need to start telling everyone what's going on and we need to tell, address the budget issues. We need to increase our tax revenue. And that's what everyone's gonna say, you know, little by little, our taxes go up. Well, my plan is, is to create a citizens committee that would be, would be composed of different residents all over Montebello that have expertise in different things, you know? And if we start doing that, we can start addressing, for example, let's say a contract wants to come in. A company wants to come in and do a contract with us. We need to start making smart choices. We need to do, we need to get the best deal that, that we have. So if we have a citizens committee that can interview prospective companies trying to contract here, then you know what? Then they can advise myself and then they could advise the rest of the city council. Because what's, what's happening is that we need to start addressing and, and opening up bids and figuring out what the best solution is or what's the best contract is. And we need to just figure out what's, what deals, you know, are not making sense right now. But I think it's moving forward and figuring out what we can do forward now, how we can, you know, just make the best decisions moving forward. And the citizens committee for that would be the best thing to start now, to start vetting anybody trying to look into, because we are, I don't know if our bidding is the best right now. Sometimes there's no bid contracts and we don't know if we're getting the best deal or the best solution.
Many neighboring cities have had an increase in new small businesses that provide creative products and services. It's instead that the city's regulations discourage small businesses from starting up in Montebello or have inhibited, sorry, or have inhibited their survival. Do you agree with the statement? If no, why do you feel these types of businesses seem to be lacking in Montebello? If yes, what would the city council change to attract these type of businesses?
Right, yeah, so, yeah, I do agree. And I'll, I'll tell you this, it's, I spoke with some small business owners on the Maple side, right in front of Montebello Intermediate. No, I'm like, Whittier side, right in front of Montebello Intermediate. And yeah, they, 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 they have problems. They have problems with foot traffic. It's on the Whittier Strip and, and they're such a high turnover rate of those small businesses. I mean, growing up as a child, like in the corner bakery right next to it, I've seen almost like four or five empty businesses and then they changed the name and, and that's what happens is that to, they don't feel like they have the support of the council and they don't feel like they have the promotion that's necessary for their businesses to succeed. Now, some solutions could be if you have a bigger business in the area that people know of and somehow it drives traffic through Whittier. And I'm mentioning Whittier because, you know, that seems to be a high turnover rate on that. But there's other parts of Montebello. If there's a bigger business that can attract that, then maybe it can increase foot traffic or can we, how as city council members, how can we beautify the city so people can walk to that strip? Or how can we promote them? Can we work with the chamber? I mean, sometimes they're paying high fees to be part of the chamber and, you know, are they getting the best deal? So it's stuff like that and, you know, it, it's unfortunate, but there's a high turnover rate. So, you know, even then, going back to committees, actually, in a couple of weeks, I'm holding, hosting a a business, a small business meeting with some of the local business owners there and see how we can help them, how we can contribute, how we can make it easier for them to succeed, you know? Because it's, it's just, they don't have the support and there is certain ordinances that make it difficult for them to succeed and we gotta cut those regulations down so, so we can do everything we can to make those small businesses succeed. And again, there's a lot of empty lots and it's, it's for a reason, you know? How much support are we giving them? They're the ones, they're the heart of Montebello. They're the ones that, that we should focus our attention on. And unfortunately, we haven't.
The homeless concern is a big and complicated, complicated issue for many cities. What steps do you feel the city council should take to reduce homelessness and the increase to the safety of our residents?
Yeah, you know, homelessness is, it's, it's, there's, um, there's a lot of layers to it, right? So you have, you know, mental health, you have addiction, you have, we can even talk about affordable housing. There's so many layers to homelessness. It's, it's, it's a difficult question because it's not, there's not one solution to it. And going back to the Band-Aid scenario, that's what we keep doing. We just keep, and not just Montebello, but everyone in LA County, we just keep putting a Band-Aid to them. There have been talks to putting a homeless shelter near the riverbed. My concern with that is that if we do that, we need to see what kind of services are gonna get there, right? But if we do that, does that mean that other individuals from other neighboring areas are gonna go into there? And now it becomes our issue and our, and our problem? I'm all for helping people, you know? I, I've done so much volunteer work. I've worked with the LA Family Housing. I had, you know, tried having my nonprofit, it was only there for six months, but I, I've, I've, I've tried, you know? I, I'm all for helping people, but, but that's something that if we do have a homeless shelter there, is it gonna attract more people here? And I talked to residents in the, cause I think it's by South, they're like, "We don't want a homeless shelter here." So that becomes an issue too. So it's something that we need to partner up with all of our neighboring cities and figure out how we can best tackle the issue and how best we can allocate the resources. Because homelessness is not just about providing a shelter or beds or anything like that. It's about how do you tackle addiction, how do you tackle mental health? And the, what's key too is that, you know, there's a lot of like students that are homeless and, and that's a population we don't even touch upon. There's people sleeping in their cars. There's students, there's families sleeping in their cars that, you know, it's, it's, and that goes into more of a a, a national thing or a state thing where, you know, the cost of living, you know, people are living paycheck to paycheck. So you know what? Sometimes, you know, some, a bad incident happens and guess what? You're out of life, you're out of your, your house and not you're homeless. So it's a very, it's a very difficult issue, but it needs to be addressed now. And it's not something that we just, we cannot provide a Band-Aid, but we need, we need an overall solution with all of our neighboring cities. And, and I know we are getting some, some money from, from LA County, cities are, to address the issue. But it's a very, it's a very difficult issue and we do, we definitely need to, to address that. But it's not, it's not a, just a one thing, you know? There's so many things that we have to provide for them.
A couple of years back, Montebello residents voted against the sale of its water company for fourteen point four million. Do you feel it is the best interest of Montebello to keep its small water company?
Yeah, and it's another, another interesting question, right? Because, and just recently, can't remember the assembly member that passed the bill, but Governor Brown just signed off on it and we don't have to bring it up, well, they don't have to bring it up to the people. They just have to get a four-fifths majority in order for the water sale. Which is difficult right now because we only have four council members, so they somehow have to agree on it. So I don't see that happening. But my concern is, I know it's costing the city and I know the city is paying for that. Again, selling natural resources and stuff like that, but if it's, if it's something that, that continues to happen, if it's gonna jeopardize our water quality and because, you know, we can't afford it or whatever the case might be, then we might have to go for the sale. But again, it has to be, see, the people voted no against it. And to me, it was mostly because it was a lack of information. But I know it's costing the city, but you know, selling natural resources and going against what the community wants, it's a little bit difficult for me. But I would say we need to do a little bit more, more research on it and see if, if we can somehow save that without selling it. But if, if, if we can't, then, you know, we have to look into that. But I, I don't, I don't like selling any natural resources, but you know, that's something that we have to look into for sure.
A revolution of public transportations has been occurring all over LA County. Whether it's the implementing bike lanes, using ride-share services, or the introduction of new devices such as Bird scooters. What is your stance on allowing electric scooters to operate in Montebello? What are your views introducing safe path lanes for bicyclists to commute in Montebello?
Yeah, I'm all for the environment and I'm all for public transportation. I know we have Measure M. I wanna say it's Measure M, but I might be wrong. But Measure M that allows, that's gonna, you know, allow transportation, allocate some funds there. I would absolutely love bike lanes. I've on certain streets because, you know, imagine Whittier, you know, we would have some accidents there, but definitely, I'm all for that. I'm a runner. I would like a running lane, you know, to share it there too. But it's, 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 yeah, definitely, we need to, look, we, we need to go more into that, that field because we're surrounded by freeways. We're getting all that pollution as it is. We, we, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of car emissions. We need to see alternatives, you know, incentivize people to, to, to take public transportation, to, you know, to bike, you know? We, we protect the environment, we become healthy. The scooters, it's an interesting one, but you know what? I, I could see scooters here. I don't like that sometimes you could leave them anywhere, like Santa Monica was having that issue. But I'm all for scooters, you know, and, and you know, if we could have a certain location like Montebello City Park where they can recharge them and, you know, we could have drop-off stations, you know, it could provide jobs too. In Santa Monica, you get people, it's pretty good pay too. I mean, you know, you get people driving like in their trucks and, and they pick up the scooters and so it could provide jobs here too. But you know, we just have to make sure that there's drop-off points and stuff like that. But I would definitely be for something like that. And for bike lanes, yeah, I would be an advocate for it. You know, if, if something we have to do, yeah, I mean, to incentivize people for, to get away from their cars, I'm all for that.
The Montebello City Council voted on several marijuana issues that allowed for business-to-business distribution and delivery-only retailers in the city. As well as allowing commercial indoor cultivation, manufacturing, and the testing of marijuana. A large part of the Southside Montebello is industrial and commercial property, where these companies will most likely manufacture goods far from public property. Do you believe in the current regulations that are best for this city? Being that these marijuana topics are so controversial, do you feel it is best for the city council to make the final decision on these matters? Or give the vote to the people of Montebello?
Man, this is a, this is a tough one, right? It's, it's a tough one in the sense that, okay, so, so let's take this back. So for Prop sixty-four, which is going off topic, that is just the legalization of marijuana. Fifty-four percent of people in Montebello voted for it, right? So what that tells me is that there is at least, uh, people are okay with some type of legalization of cannabis. And even the word marijuana has a negative connotation, which the proper word should be cannabis. But that's another, that's another conversation. But so with that being said, you know, I, I believe that, and I was just having this conversation today with some seniors, I went to a senior center. They're completely against it. And I think what gets people angry the most is that the city council passes important decisions like that without really consulting or without really hosting town halls. Again, not everybody can go to the city council meetings. You know, it, it's just a very, very, people wanna be heard and people wanna be, wanna have detailed information. The whole cannabis industry, it's relatively, relatively like new, you know? So we have, we have case on both sides. Cause I have people tell me bad things, you know, besides separate research that our team has done. And there's cities that, you know, like have really gone up and, you know, they've gotten two million dollars within ten months. And other ones, you know, I don't know where the source, but it might be that a little bit of crime went up, this and that. So it's such a relatively new topic that it's, it's very difficult because you're gonna get half of the population angry. So the best thing for us to do at this time is, one, leave it up to the people to vote on it and, and see what the general, you know, consensus is of what type of business we have here. And, and two, just be, you know, whatever we do, try to get the most money. Like, you know, if there's some, some bidding going on, you know, for the applications, we can charge up and we can try to get that and we can try to control it. The thing I, I did talk to people and including those seniors were that we have to stop pretending like cannabis consumption is not happening here. We have to, cause that's, that's the number one issue. That's a problem that, that we're gonna pretend like, oh, you know what? Let's just turn our shoulder and, oh, it's, it's not happening. It's happening. People right now are smoking. People right now are consuming it. So we have to stop pretending like, like it's not gonna happen. And to be completely honest with you, within the next five years, maybe even less, this thing is gonna be legalized federally. And that's just because Uncle Sam is gonna know how to tax it and how to get money from it. So do we, the, the, so the, the, the question becomes is, do we become one of the first cities to start really enacting policy and try to control it? Or do we take a seat back and say, "You know what? Let's see other cities, how they respond to it, what happens?" You know, can we increase revenue? Can we? You know, that's, that's really what the question is. Because federally, I'm gonna tell you right now, once we're able, you know, the federal government's able to control and tax it, this thing is gonna become legal. Because it's a lot of money that they're leaving on the table. So that's what the real question becomes is, do we take a seat back and, and watch all the other cities? That's what the real question becomes is, do do we take a seat back and and watch all the other cities, see if how they do? Or do we say, okay, let's try to control it and see how we can go about it, because. I- it's the the, you know, we have candidates that are making this their sole issue. And they're making this issue black and white when there's so much gray area into it. You know, I I haven't even touched about hemp, you know, hemp is not, doesn't even have the attributes to to get higher or to do anything. Hemp. Can change, you know, can make clothing, you know, but because of the negative connotation of of cannabis. Uh, you know, we have this negative stereotype. I mean, what if we have a factory that builds um hemp, you know? That creates hemp and we could create clothing and and we could create jobs there. That doesn't get discussed. There's gonna be no error, you know, nothing bad happening. But again, i- it's it's education, um, ultimately, I know it's a very difficult issue, so what I would say on that. Leave it up to the to the people, um, have educated people from both sides. Uh, host some of the town halls, both on the on the yes and the no, because what happens is that. There's a lot of negative information, not negative, I'm sorry, there's a lot of wrong information that gets distributed because it's this, you know. Just wrong information that gets distributed, so what we need to do is have um, people that that know. That specific subject on both sides and let people decide after that. Uh, I I mean, I've heard things that cartels are gonna come in and stuff like that. That that's not true. That that's just not true. That's, we need to step 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 away from that, but if but if we have. Um, you know, we could have scientists from both or 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 experts on both sides. Let's host some town halls, educate the public and see what's the best for for Montebello and and also. Have people that say, okay, this is the potential revenue, this is how we're gonna control it. For their bids, charge them a good amount of money, you know? So again, going back to what I just said, the real question is, what kind of city do we wanna be? One, that's gonna, you know, hold back and see what other cities do, or do we become that city? That that leads the charge and might be the one that, you know, that that, that's a city that experiments, so that's a question. It's a tough question. But um, we need to really um, look into it and it's um, I think leave it up to the people, but with town halls and. Um, and really educated um, um, answers to everything. We can't, we have to stop this, yeah, these these things going on, yeah.
Many followers of the page Everything in and Around Montebello have questioned why Montebello is not as lucrative, attractive, safe. Or have a diverse businesses as its neighboring cities. Do you feel the residents that are more informed and involved and have the sense of the city unity have a greater chance of guiding their? City through a prosperous future?
Yeah, absolutely. I think um, yeah, I mean, i- it's, I, to me, honestly, it's an obvious yes, because. The more um, the more involved people are, um, the more uh, they care about their city, the more they wanna see it succeed. Um, you know, one issue I haven't even touched upon and and I'll go briefly on this is that. Because of uh, what the c- city is going through, a lot of people are leaving the city and then they're renting the property. To, you know, renters, so what happens is, and you could totally see this, is that you have a homeowner. Their house, their yard looks nice, and then you go next door, it might be a renter, and look, if it's not your property, you're not gonna take care of the best. You know, si- as as much as you're the the homeowner, so so people are leaving this city and they're leaving. Almost every, every time we walk, we're like, oh yeah, we're about to leave. If things don't change this year or next year, we're about to leave, we're about to go, so. So I think, yeah, I think I think what we lack is unity, uh, we lack, but but again, how much stuff do we do, how? Um, thankfully for pages like Everything in and Around Montebello and 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 other pages, people are able to find out of stuff that's going on. You know, uh, sometimes we don't know what's going on because of of the lack of that, right? So um, I think that's that's a, that that's a big, that's a big statement. I think if if we get people more involved. You know, the city can go up.
How would you improve the access of relevant and important city information to the residents?
Right, so that's, yeah, so that's 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 what we need to do, um. Again, going back to to what I had said first, look, the Montebello pages are great, um, I I think they do a good job, um. Uh, specifically this one of um, you know, giving out the information. Um, you know, I ideas like this, like the podcast too, giving away information. Important thing though is that there's a lot of stuff that happens at City Hall. Uh, now, we do have access to it on TV, Channel Three and stuff like that, but. We still need to have, we still need to go and have, uh, again, meetings, if it's uh, monthly meetings. In different coffee shops, we invite people, coffee with the candidate or couple, not the candidate, it will be coffee with the council member. Um, and and let those people know what's going on in the city, what events are going on. We need to really unite and we really need to, like even, if if people get a sense that. This is their city, that they they, that they um, that they belong, that uh, they care for it. I'm telling you, there's gonna be a whole different atmosphere. Right now, unfortunately, you hear about Montebello, it's always in the bad, in news for the bad stuff. And um, I know that that if 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 we lift up the spirit, if we lift up the communication and. And if we get innovative, like why not create an application or alerts or, you know, you could subscribe to this. Um, website and you'll get Montebello alerts when something is happening. Or when um, uh, we're hosting a town hall and boom, all those alerts go on phones that are registered through there. Uh, and of course, we won't do it too much because then people get tired of it, but if you do one alert, one or two alerts every, I don't know, two weeks. Just saying, okay, this is happening in Montebello, uh, we have a farmer's market coming. Just imagine, everybody has a cellphone. To it's little things like that, that if we bring technology in here, um, can really make it easier for people to to communicate and um. Um, even important information, you know, this suspect was caught or avoid this area, you know, it's stuff like that, that. It's our time to stop being the city that lacks behind technology and start being that leader, that city that. That brings in a new, a new different vision, so um, I agree with you and 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 and, not with you, but with that statement. Uh, that we need more unity and we need to, you know, send that information over to the rest of Montebello, cause people are not informed. The message gets lost from City Hall to the people's residents.
What can be done to get residents more involved in the decision-making process, such as voting and attending city council meetings?
Yeah, we need to um, we might need to bring City Hall to the people, uh, one, again, going back to um. Having coffee with the council member, two, and this is what we wanna do and this is what um, I've been. I don't wanna call it recruiting people, but I have, uh, you know, we go walking, you, people wanna be engaged and you have. People that love this city a lot. You want, you like, it's crazy how much passion they have for it and how much. Unfortunately, how they've given up, you know, and we're fortunate to have a conversation with them. And again, if we build different committees, you know, if we bring um, bringing excitement back, people wanna feel like they're being heard. Um, people wanna feel like they can participate in the decision-making. If you give the power back to the people, then you know what? They'll be engaged, they'll be like, okay, you know, why why don't we have a committee where? Um, you know, again, before lobbyists meet with any of us, they meet with them first to see if they have the best interest for the city. You know, they wanna, they wanna feel, and then that builds integrity. People will look up to the citizens committee and say. Yeah, you know, those people, whatever they're saying, I agree with them, or or, you know, they have, um, yeah, they have integrity. It's it's stuff like that and. Um, just promote that, promote that, that that image, that, you know, that that way of thinking.
What efforts could you make to gather the diverse populations of Montebello to share community experiences? Opportunities for strangers and neighbors to get to know each other and others to create large bonds of community?
Yeah, so there's, I mean, we have different ideas, I, I love farmer's market, uh, there was actually one today, um, at a. Beverly Hospital, it was really small, but it was really nice and uh, it was like, maybe like seven different um, little little shops there. But that, something like that, like, you know, like, let's bring a farmer's market, let's have a a farmer's market once every two weeks. Every other Friday, you know, that, you get people all over the place, people get excited, like, oh, I'm gonna try that, you know? Um, I don't know, those tacos or whatever, or those those fresh apples or whatever the case is. Uh, people from all over the town would go to, then you you can start building that friendship and then we give that opportunity to uh. Local residents that they could be the ones leading the farmer's market. Uh, another big event too was the one that um, was led by, I believe it's Nathan from The Angry Horse. Uh, and and the rest of the business owners there, uh, they closed down Whittier. And then there was like, you know, different vendors and stuff like that, that, people were excited about that. You know, people were like, yes, let's do this, and you know, it's that sense of of um, involvement, you know, like looking forward to do something in your city. Because the reality is that we have people that can't afford to go to their cities. Uh, that can't afford to take their families, you know, somewhere else, so. If we provide those services that are walking distance, they could just take their family, you know, e- even if they might not be able to purchase something. At least it creates excitement with like little girls or little boys, like, oh, you know, we can provide face painting or or like even the art fest, you know? Um, I'm a big uh, uh, advocate for like the arts and, um, I love. One of my favorite things was uh, the open mic, um, at the Daily Brew, which I already miss, but you know. Even then, we have so many local artists here, we have singers, poets, comedians. We have a lot of talent, even that, you know, bringing that into into um. Into events and and closing down places and and having, just having a livelihood, you know, having even. Just something that people can look forward to, uh, and and you know what? The 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 problem is they always say, well, the resources, we don't have the money, well, bring somebody in to sponsor it, you know? People will just, people love, companies will love to come in there, just put their logo in there and sponsor the event. You know, we have to think outside of the box and allow those events to come in here because it really, it really does lift up the morale in the city. It really does change the thing, you know, and and that's what, we gotta start changing the mentality of Montebello or of what people think of Montebello now.
This is the end of our ca- questionnaire. Is there something you would like to share for the people of Montebello?
Yeah, you know, look, um, a- all I can say is that we, I I really care for the city. And I have, I'm passionate about the people of Montebello, um, I grew up here, I was raised here. I've lived most of my life here and. I've seen, you know, I've had experiences, I I've I've traveled, I I've gone to. I've been to Africa, I've been to North Dakota, fighting the pipeline, I've I've done a lot of different things, I've been an activist for a long time. I wanna change the city. I want, you know, our kids to even have an opportunity to say. Um, we can do it, we can change it. I wanna give the the average person here. Um, a sense of of that there is hope, that our city can grow, that our city can move forward, that. That that they loo- they do live in a nice city, that um, the Montebello can be uh, one of the top cities, you know? We always hear of other cities and we're like, oh, that's a nice city, oh, that's a great city, oh, yeah, wish I lived here. No, like, we can make Montebello that. And like I tell everyone, it's something that I can't do by myself. I need the the help of everyone. Uh, even once we do get elected, I need the help and involvement of everyone. Uh, and if we work together, we can get the city, um, not just back on track, but we can make the city. With the vision, we can make the city a leader amongst all of our cities and neighboring cities, so. Uh, it's a lot of hard work, we know what we're getting ourselves into. We know that that it's not gonna be easy, but we're giving it our all, we're gonna continue to give it our all for the remainder of this campaign. And hopefully, once we get elected, you know, that's when the real work starts and. Um, we're excited for that, we have the energy and we we really wanna change the city.
Alright, well, thank you so much for your time, Sal. It was a pleasure interviewing you.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate it.